Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont official voting board meeting for December 6, 2010. I too begin by asking our clerk to take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
Clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forisley.
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zeminek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Yes.
IT Supervisor Leilcherberg.
Yes.
Director of Fire Prevention Bureau Daniels.
Yes.
And Budget Analyst Parker.
Yes.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held November 11th and board meeting held November 15, 2010.
Motion to approve Seneca?
Second, Emery.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forisley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Thank you. Reports, I've got several things. The first thing I'd like to do is call Glenn Leilcherberg up to the podium to talk a little bit about the outages that we've been experiencing with Comcast Cable.
Yes. For those of you that have Comcast Cable, it went out last night around midnight and was restored this morning around 7:30 in the morning. And it was due to a server failure on their side that stopped the Internet service from resolving addresses. So could not go out. It's called a DNS server. They are looking into it. They don't know what caused it. They had a very similar outage that happened at the exact same time, about a week ago, on the East Coast. So they have a tendency to think that the two are connected in some way. But beyond that, I forwarded off the official response from Comcast. It also caused, and we haven't gotten the answer on this, why it caused some channels to go off the air as well. Channel 6 and 16 went off. We also had some problems. Trustee Seneca saw a couple other channels that were off the air as well, and we haven't got an answer why those went down. We also had some internal technical problems with 6 and 16, which we thought were tied to the playback system because it came back up on the air and then shortly later, those channels went off the air again. So any questions?
Well, actually, it went off before midnight last night, but that's beside the point. They said it was going to be repaired by 9:57 last night when I called in because my mother-in-law in Downers called and said, "I can't get in to the Internet," so I went and checked. So I called, and that was it. Probably 8:30, quarter or nine.
Actually, I reversed my times. It was 7:30 to 12:30.
Glenn, maybe, I know the document that you forwarded to all of us had some simple instructions where if you're still experiencing problems, what to do, and maybe you could just address that for the people watching.
Yeah, if you still don't have Internet, what you need to do is unplug your cable modem, not your wireless modem in your house. Wait about one minute and then plug it back in. And what that will do is download the correct information back into the cable modem and should restore service.
Great, thank you.
But the problem with 6 and 16 actually was something else in the beginning because we know it was out all day Sunday.
Yeah, it was something else. We believe, we know when I came in to look at it, the piece of equipment was down here.
Okay, and that's before this other thing happened, then?
Correct.
Okay.
We brought it back up. The channels came on the air. By the time I made it home, they were off the air again. We checked. The system this morning was still up and the channels were still off the air. So we had actually thought that the system had failed again because we've had some problems with it over the last couple of months that are going to be swapping out the system, but it wasn't completely down like we thought it was.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is, over the past six or eight months, I've received comments from several residents who have had their car towed or had a family member's car towed in one incident. The mother was upset because they came and towed. The car was sitting in her driveway and the police ordered that the car be towed away. And in that particular instance, there was a $500 fine to have that, for her to get her car back again. And that was her children or her children's friends that had used the car. But what I asked Tom to do is come in and just explain a little bit so everybody can get a better understanding of the reasons why there would be such a high fee and when fees like this are charged and what other towing fees are typical for traffic violations here in the village.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As the mayor talked about, what he's alluding to is our, it's called our Administrative Tow Program, which was enacted by ordinance, I believe, early in 2010, if not very late of 2009. Our program went to effect in February. And basically, our Administrative Towing Program was created to act as a deterrent to keep people from driving when they're not supposed to, thus helping us keep and maintaining a level of safety for our residents and visitors who drive through our community. The department, part of the Administrative Tow Program, will impound any vehicle that was used in the following offenses. And again, the toes are restricted to this certain offense for the administrative toes, and I'll talk about other regular toes in a minute. But driving under the influence of alcohol or drugs or a combination of both, driving whenever a person's license is suspended or revoked, driving whenever a person's license is expired in excess of 12 months, or driving without a license and the driver does not have any proof of insurance. If an officer makes a traffic stop and is going to make an arrest for one of those violations, again, it's limited to those violations only, the vehicle is eligible and the vehicle is to be impounded by the police department pursuant to the Administrative Tow Policy and ordinance. An exception to this is if the vehicle has been reported stolen and the owner of the vehicle can provide proof that the vehicle was stolen at the time the offense occurred. If we arrest someone in a stolen car, we're not going to charge that owner the $500 because that basically he had no control over the car at that time. Officers are required to notify any, the owner of any impounded vehicle, the fact that the vehicle was towed and impounded. A lot of times, the owner was actually the driver of the vehicle at the time, but sometimes it's not. So the officer is required to notify the owner that their car was impounded as subject to the $500 impounding fee. And if they want, they can request a hearing to dispute the impounding of the vehicle. Notifications done either at the time of the arrest or we must send the driver a certified mail, a letter by mail, and they must respond within 10 days of the arrest requesting a hearing. They can request, again, the hearing. The hearings are held the same time our red light hearings are administered here at the village hall. Our hearing officer is Victor Pukas, who, again, will hear the red light camera violations first, and then anyone who wants to contest the impounding of their vehicle, they'll hear all that evidence as well. The vehicle, once it's impounded, can, again, can only be released to the owner. They either have to pay the $500 fee or in lieu of that, they can pay a $500 bond if they request a hearing. They can do one of the two. All towing and storage fees are separate from the impounding fee. The tow company will assess a fee to tow the vehicle and to store the vehicle. We do not store the vehicles on village property. Vehicles are stored at the towing company's property. So the owner of the vehicle would have to come and pay the $500 impounding fee at the police department, and then he's also, he or she is also on, not eligible, is also responsible for the towing fees, which is set for this type of violation. All towing and storage fees are between the owner of the vehicle and the tow company. We have no responsibility for that. We don't set how many days. We don't set the policy. We can set the rates, but we don't set the towing times or exactly. If there's a dispute over the towing fees or the storage times, that's between the vehicle owner and the towing company owner themselves. All vehicles impounded for a DUI are subject to a 12-hour hold. Reason for this is that a person, if there's arrest for DUI, cannot go down, pay the $500, go down and get their car and drive away while they still may be under the influence. So it's up for the officer's discretion if the car is involved in a DUI arrest. We can impose a 12-hour hold on the vehicle, which is no fee for that. The vehicle can request, again, a hearing. The hearing is scheduled and the owner has, can present any evidence that they feel is necessary to dispute our impounding of their vehicle. The hearing officer will review all evidence and make a determination of whether the impounding of vehicles liable or non-liable. If a determination is made that the vehicle is, the impounding was not liable, they are refunded the $500 fee. However, they're still responsible for the towing fees as well. Between February of 2010 and October 31st of this year, our department has impounded 300 vehicles. Forty-two of those remain unpaid where the owner has not contacted us to get his car back. In those cases, the car is normally turned over to the tow company via junk title, and they will junk the vehicle and they will keep whatever money that they obtained from that process to pay for their tow fees or their storage fees. We do not take anything from that. If someone decides not to come in and claim the car or pay the $500, we don't go after them for that. Twenty-four vehicles of the 300, or 22 vehicle owners have requested a hearing. Twenty-three of those hearings resulted in a finding of liable. One was found not liable. And additionally, if anyone's listening that owes a vehicle, tow company knows that someone owes a tow company. We're currently accepting applications, this is done on a yearly basis, for authorized police toes. This is for any type of towing service that the police department may utilize, whether it be for a traffic accident, the impounding of the vehicle, even another arrest where we may not be impounding of the vehicle. We only authorize certain tow companies to tow for us, and those applications are available at the village website, which is www.westmont.io.gov, and it's under the police department section of our website. Again, there's vehicles, you could be arrested for a drug-related offense. That's not subject to an impounding of the vehicle. It has to be subject just to those four offenses, or those offenses which I previously listed.
Tom, would you explain for the people at home, under two circumstances, what the Westmont Police Department's policy is? One, let's say you pull somebody over for driving on a suspended and you're going to do an impound, but there's a responsible driver in the car, or if it's a minor, you know, you call their parent and they say, "I'll be right there and I'll take the car." What's the police department's policy?
The officer does have a little bit of leeway. We're trying to be restrictive on that so that you can't be into this. It was arbitrary or it was just capricious. If the person can get another driver there, it's, again, it's up for the officer's discretion. They feel that there may be another licensed driver in the vehicle. They can do that depending upon the circumstances. Also, too, if, before the tow would arrive or the tow could arrive, and that person, you know, can get someone else there, that's acceptable use. However, it's kind of because we run into the problem where the person says, "Well, I can get another licensed driver here," and now you're prolonging the officer having to wait. It has to be if they call the tow.
Yeah, we don't have a duty to notify somebody to get them out there and wait.
No, that's correct.
The other circumstances, as the mayor brought up, let's say you've got, it could be, it could be a minor, could be a teenager, or let's say some guy's driving down the street home from a local bar. He's weaving, he's under the influence, the officer following him suspects it, so he turns on his lights. The officer lights up his Mars lights and follows for another block, and the guy turns into his own driveway, gets out of the car and says, "You can't impound my car. I'm in my own driveway." What's the policy?
Again, it's up to the officer's discretion, the policy. The officer does give the officer a leeway, but then again, that's why we leave it up for the officer's discretion based on the circumstances that you just set. If the officer had, you know, if the offender, person being stopped had pulled over immediately, they're farther away from that driveway. We do run across cases where the person, you know, will not stop. It's not a chase or it's not a pursuit, but they will just continue to drive with the officer following behind them until they get to their driver and say, "Now, you can't do anything because I'm on my own property." Again, it's kind of hard, but that's why we leave it for the officer's discretion to decide how to handle that.
Well, and there's no guarantee that that person will get in the car and leave once the officer has left.
Correct. I mean, that would defeat the person if we leave it there. That person goes through the booking process for a DUI, is out in approximately two to three hours. Again, that's one of the insurances why we take it. That's why we have the hold for DUIs, that a person cannot go back and reoffend. One other thing I wanted to describe, too, I mentioned the word, and I was very careful mentioning the word, impounding of a vehicle and not the seizure of a vehicle. There are provisions in state law which allows us to seize a vehicle, whether it be using a felony or it be using a drug-related offense, where in that case, we actually try to take the ownership of the vehicle away from the owner of the vehicle. It's done to this DuPage County State's Attorney's Office and has to go through a hearing by a judge. The judge has to award us that vehicle. There's all sorts of things. I want everyone to be assured that this is two separate things. This is an impoundment pursuant to our policy and not a vehicle seizure where we're trying to take the vehicle away from the legal owner. Any other questions?
And what are the circumstances for anyone watching that you would be seizing vehicles rather than impounding?
Drug-related offense and also an offense involving DUI and a reckless homicide. Also, if you're arrested for a felony charge for driving while license suspended, usually that means is if your license is suspended because you were involved in a serious traffic offense and/or previous DUIs. Anytime those are felony-type, it would be a felony charge of driving while license suspended, it's up for us to make determination with the conjunction with the DuPage County State's Attorney's Office, do we seize this vehicle? And again, the purpose for that is, again, is as a deterrent to keep people who shouldn't be driving from driving their vehicles. It's not to take cars away from people, but if you have a repeat DUI offender who's constantly going out and reoffending, he or she is obviously not learning their lesson. Well, one way to teach them the lesson is take away their ability to drive. You know, hopefully that would stop them or, and again, act as a deterrent, too. You know, someone should not go out once they've been drinking and driving, once they become aware of the consequences. That's something they should take into consideration before they go and offend.
Chief, you had mentioned about some towing companies that you're accepting some bids. Do we use towing companies right here in town?
We currently have two there in town. One is Westmont Shell at 63rd and Cass. The other one is Independence Towing, which is, has a storage area here based in Westmont. I believe they're actually associated out of Downers Grove, but their storage facility is over at the Bales property. And the third, I, we have four right now. We're reducing our number down to three because we really don't feel we have the need for four tow vehicles, reducing down to three. The deadline for that is December 15th. The determination is mine. I will be coming in front of the board, I believe, on the 16th with the recommendation for the board's approval on to enact these three. We look at the history. We look at infractions. We look at, there's a certain set of requirements that they are required to meet. They have to have a storage yard somewhere in Westmont or near Westmont, or they have to have an indoor storage facility within 10 miles. There's a list, standard list of criteria that they must meet. They can send us for an application. There's no fee for the application, and it's up for myself and my staff. And the staff will make a recommendation to me. I make the final determination as to which three companies we're going to use. We go by their past performance. We, I'm sorry, the third one, one of the three, four that we use is Chariot Towing, which is located in countryside. We've used them for a long number of years and they've provided a very good service to us. However, we're, O'Hare Towing has been very interested and has been letting us know that they're interested in coming. Again, Westmont Shell, we know will accept an application from them. But we look at their past performance and we also do a, not a background check, but we do a check as to their services to other communities, how they've been to other communities, are other communities experienced problems. We do a, we do an investigation to make sure that they're a reputable company.
When we merge with Downers, is, are we all using the same towing? How do they, are they going to know if it's on Westmont property, they have to call these three?
Yeah, that was one of the, good question. That was one of the concerns that Downers asked if we were going to merge our towing contracts. The answer is no. Their towing services are completely different from ours. They will have a list, their dispatchers will have a list for a Westmont tow. You call one of these three companies. For a Downers Grove tow, they have their list that they're used to using now. So they will know and they will have, what we do right now, we just have basically a book with four names listed and then repeated and repeated, and as one company's called, it's crossed off, and then the next, the next company will get the next tow. Conceivably, you have an accident right now at 63rd and Cass, we would call Company A and they would respond. You know, they get an accident at 55th and Cass, but then we go down to list the Company B, you know, and so on and so on. This is also for traffic accidents, for administrative toes, any police direct, that's why it's called a police-directed tow that we would encounter.
This would be handled differently if, should an officer come upon a vehicle that broke down? They don't have to be worried that if the officer calls for a pickup, that they're going to be impounded? This place can take them to a repair place also if they need to or?
What we try to do is that we, you know, depending upon the circumstances, if the vehicle's off on the shoulder of the road or remain there for a longer period of time, we'll let the vehicle remain. However, if the vehicle's in the traveling of Ogden Avenue and it's got a broken axle, which prevents the officer from pushing the vehicle off to the side, we have push bumpers. We can try to push some cars off to the side. Or we get there and the driver is not there, the vehicle's locked up, no way for us to move the vehicle. Officers get a reasonable amount of time. Again, officer discretion, I can't give you a set time. We'll try to run the license plate, contact the owner, "Do you know where your car is? Do you know where the driver is?" Locate the driver. Okay, what's going on here? We try to relocate the vehicle if we can. If not, who would you like us to call for a tow? Most of the time we get, I really don't have one because really, you know, in my own personal life, how many times has it happened? Very few. My wife has been stranded. It's like call, you know, whoever's in the area. If there's an officer, go with who he says to tow. And if we can't get ahold of the driver and it's a, you know, time period, if it's, you know, 5 o'clock on a Wednesday afternoon, heavy traffic and it's on Ogden Avenue, no, it needs to be towed immediately. If it's 5 o'clock in the morning and the officer can stand by and allows it, and you have a little bit more leeway, you can let the car sit a little bit longer.
So it'll be handled a little differently than if it was for an arrest-type situation?
An arrest, yeah, the arrest type, the driver or the offender has no say so as to who we use. It's a police-directed tow.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Chief, you mentioned 300-plus toes. Is that unusual or is that a kind of a normal for a year? It just seemed high to me and I, I was just.
We're averaging 30 to, our last month was our highest month with 45 toes. It depends on the officer's arrest rate. Depends on the arrest rate for these type of things. This is our first year doing it, so I can't give you.
No history.
Yeah, history. I can give you a month-by-month breakdown, but we're being consistent. I don't think we've been below 30 toes a month for that figure. It is close to what we anticipate. I think when we first came before you about a year ago from now, I think we anticipated 15 to 20 toes. That's off the top of my head. But again, it's based on the officer's activity.
Very good. Thank you, Tom.
All right, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Okay, moving right along, our village clerk.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Our village attorney, John Zemanek.
I just want to mention I am going to be out of town during the next set of meetings. Emery Perez will be here, and this will be my last chance to wish you all Merry Christmas. So Merry Christmas.
Christmas. Merry Christmas.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you. I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. First item, development permit request, 15 South Cass. Board to consider motion to postpone a development permit, request from Mr. Jerry Navarro for a family restaurant at 15 South Cass Avenue until such time as further supporting documentation is provided by the applicant.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Forisley.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forisley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next item, temporary outdoor sales request, 111 South Cass Avenue. Board to consider an ordinance approving a request from Mr. Jim Murray to allow the temporary outdoor sale of Christmas trees.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Forisley.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forisley.
Yes.
Westmont Train Depot, 18 West Quincy. Westmont Chamber Commerce Board to consider an ordinance approving the placement of a wood display rack in the Westmont Train Depot to display business and community event promotional materials. We have a motion.
Motion approved. Emery.
Second, Seneca.
Discussion.
Including with the recent email that we got from our Director of Public Works that the cabinet will actually be raised to allow for cleaning of the floor so that it doesn't ruin the oak and that it looks like the benches and the masonry will be taken out and not reused. So we're well aware of the intended update since Thursday.
Any other comments?
Nope, sounds good.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forisley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Next item, waiver request, 313 West Ogden. Board to consider an ordinance approving a waiver request from Simmski Family Limited Partnership to defer the application of additional sheet rock, fireproofing materials to one side of an interior wall of a currently occupied space until a change in occupancy occurs.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Fleming.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forisley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Development permit request, 216 North Cass. Board to consider motion to postpone ordinances approving the following request from Mr. John Hagedorn until the December 30th, 2010 Committee, the whole meeting. A, downtown development permit request to operate a music store, and B, masonry waiver request to operate a commercial business from a frame, structure.
Motion to approve both A and B. Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
We did have some correspondence, I think, today, Doug Daniels and I from the Fire Department. It is possible that Mr. Hagedorn may have a report back from his architect as early as this Friday. I don't know if that would allow us to get on the, I think would still allow us to get on the December 16th agenda if the board was so inclined. Throw that out, there's a possibility. If he's got it in sufficient time, can we get it to you? If not, just hold it over till the 30th, I guess.
If you get it to us.
Yeah, I'd say do it.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion. I said motion to approve.
Yes.
IMRF, board to consider motion to approve two IMRF resolutions. A, a resolution include compensation paid under an Internal Revenue Code Section 125 plan as IMRF earnings, and B, a resolution include taxable allowances as IMRF earnings for auto and phone.
Motion to approve point A, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Next item, item eight, attorneys, we'll take all these together. Zoning code tax amendments, board to consider ordinance approving the following requests, A, amendments to Section 7.02 Business District Provisions, B, amendments to Section 13.07 Variances, C, amendments to Section 13.09 Special Uses, and D, amendments to Section 13.11 Amendments.
Motion to approve points A, B, C, and D, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Okay, next item, personnel actions, board to consider motion authorizing the following personnel-related actions, A, lifting the hiring fees to fill two part-time budgeted positions in the Fire Department, and B, waiving the advertising requirement of the Personnel Code Section 62-56-1 in order to hire a qualified retired inspector from the Pleasant View Fire District for a part-time inspector position, and to hire a current volunteer EMA member for a paid EMA position.
Motion to approve point A, Emery.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion on point A. Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.[1495.65]